So, uh, what I did was just to take what we had worked on. And then, um, if we go, uh, if you go down the, down to five, I just added another, reason that we could, you know, the right to reject an application saying it doesn't meet the requirement set by the town. Um, just a general, but most of the changes I made were in the, there weren't that many because some of this, I think we're going to need staff work. Uh, we're, we're in the application, in the actual application that people fill out.
Right.
So, um,
The only question, the only question I had was on that number five. Uh, in the main part of it, before we get to the application. The last sentence. Uh, well, that whole thing dealing with reserves the right to reject. And you say, uh, neglected the payment of taxes bill. What would be a bill if they had a traffic?
Bills. It should be. Okay, good.
Cause I didn't know what are the bills they might have. It would be something that they incurred and was fined by the town and never paid?
Um, I guess I, that was right out of the Fairfield application.
Okay.
Um, we can. Just a small.
I can just, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
No, go ahead now.
I'm just gonna say make it, um, I'll just put a, something parentheses. Make the, uh, make this. Oh. Remember mine, my son calls me too much. Make this, uh, uh, relevant to, um, Mansfield.
Okay, sounds good.
Let's put a note there so that we.
And just, uh, in the first sentence of five, it should be the town council and an affordable housing committee expressly reserve.
Reserve, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I did find that later on that it doesn't, we can make a recommendation as Katie said to the council. And they, they don't have to agree with it. They can, they have the power to determine if something is going to be granted or not. Okay, so we ready to go into the application?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so there's thing, couple of things, um.
Okay.
Stuff to do, like set up this process, get the numbers right, um. What about other terms and restrictions? So we have.
Where are you, Mike?
I'm in the application. On the third page, other terms and restriction period, that's the section. Other terms and restrictions period.
Okay, you wanna just start though, let's go through it piece by piece and then.
Uh, this is before, it's the last section before that.
Oh, it's not in the actual application, it's in the preamble. Oh, other terms and restrictions, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are we gonna just, this 25K with the form of a zero percent interest loan, I mean, I feel like, and these numbers, where did the?
Well, that, that was, uh, again, that was directly out of the Fairfield application. So we have to discuss this with, uh, Jennifer, I mean, my own, it, it seemed to me that, um, in most instances, the, um, when I've seen these set size, it's been for 40 years, a 40 year, um, deed restriction. Um, and, um,
Right.
And I do know that, um, I was familiar with Farmer's Home, I think I mentioned that. That if you get a, uh, I helped develop a nonprofit, we built homes at one percent mortgages. And if you didn't, at, before 20 years, you don't have to put that in, it's okay. Before 20 years, if you sold that house, um, you had to pay all of that back. I think after 20 years, it was forgiven. So we have to discuss this further with staff.
Right, okay, so then we can skip it now.
And I don't, I don't have any. And probably. Okay, so in the application. Uh, that's the one, it's actually two.
Yeah, I thought everything's good, except I thought we should add a project title at the top.
Ah, okay, good.
Um, and then I think what I said something in our last meeting is we should make it so that the applications are coming out in the same format so that we're not getting things that look different than that. Nice and organized, just, you know, it says attached here, attached there, and it's like.
Oh, I see.
So do we, you know, I thought we could do. Um, do we want to actually say, you know, in appendix one, uh, describe the applicant's relevant experience? Something like that, and structure it more. I don't, I don't care, you know, just trying to get it so that the applications are very structured. Um.
Uh, let me just get done.
Because there's certain things that they're not, we're not going to want them to squeeze into this application that they're going to do attached. And then the question is, do we define those as appendices or?
Okay, Katie, can you hear what Michael's saying?
Yes, I am. Um, I like the idea of appendices, appendix, uh, simply because we just say here, willy nilly, please attach additional sheets as necessary.
Right.
Uh, we need to have something that is formal so that they would know to go to that to look at it.
Right, and it has a title, so we know what section it is.
Right.
Otherwise, I like your description, willy nilly. So you know, it'll say appendix one, um, applicant's relevant experience. And then we know that that is what it is when we get to that.
Okay.
Right, and that it would not get lost in the application process. As we know, if we attach too many extra pages to the application, they, and as they go through people, it's paper, it can get lost or damaged or something like that. And if it's an appendix, we're going to pay more attention to it and give it a little bit more reference.
So I've read, I've reviewed a lot of proposals in my time, and some of them are just this hodgepodge of stuff that's just thrown together and you're just, it's so confusing, you're like, where is the project description?
Yeah.
Leafing through all this junk that's added at the end.
Okay, so here's what I, so I'm taking, trying to take what you said, so I I wrote, please attach additional information, appendix one, and then titled, in parentheses, titled the appendices. So the first one would be.
But then we're gonna have to follow through with this, so. I'm counting, uh, I marked things like five appendices.
Okay, well, let's put it, so I'm just, so here, um, as part of that, um, the, uh, set, well, this, oh, this is section two of property information I added. I didn't like, you know, I thought this was pretty loosey goosey related to the, I took some of this out of the Stanford application. List all approvals, funding of prerequisites, E G purchase of land and inland wetlands, zoning approval, financing. It must be secured before the activity can be moved.
Right.
Um, okay, just so that I understand. This application will go through us and the town council, but it's already have, will have gone through inland wetlands and zoning, P and C, before it gets to affordable housing.
Not necessarily, I guess.
That's what it's saying there. It's list all approvals.
It doesn't say that they have to have all approval, I mean, we should say all approvals, if any.
It says inland wetlands and zoning approval.
I know, but it.
That, that right there denotes that it has gone through planning and zoning and inland wetlands, and they have said yes to the project. They're not saying the project can happen. They're just saying that they would issue a, uh, permit for it to happen.
No, I'm saying, what, that wasn't the intent of what I meant here, so we can change the wording somewhat.
Yeah, I think we need to change the wording there.
List all approvals, if any.
So,
um.
The thing I liked about Stanford is that they have these fillable uh, fillable slots in their application, so can we make fills, you click on it, it says, you know, it gives you a choice, either yes or no, right? Have you gotten this approval, yes or no? When you just click on it and just fills it in.
Ah, that's good.
So fillable form with options, um, I.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Stanford's form is very much that way.
Yes.
And you can see all the forms, you just click. Uh, you can click or type in your text, or you just click do a check mark, or you assume you can put yes or no in there.
Alright.
Our application should be that way with all these appendices attached.
Yeah.
We'll get a nice structure.
Um, okay, so do we want to, um, do we want to, instead of going further here? Um, do we want to look at the Stanford application?
So, I heard.
What?
That was a question I had going into this meeting. Um, I think what we have is good, but then we should strive for that. Well, we can do it either direction.
Um, go ahead, Katie.
Well, this I had was under section three, project proposal. And I'm looking at this as somebody that would be filling out this application to do uh, low income or affordable housing. I wouldn't look at it as a regular application for getting a building permit to build a multifamily housing development. Uh.
You want to build a, so, so I'll give you an example. Uh, Mansfield Housing Authority, um, is hoping to both rehab the existing Halaico Estates, but they also want to add, they also want to add units there. They have the property, I think, or have the ability to get the property to do that. So to do something similar to, maybe something, I don't want to talk for them, but that's what I've understood they've talked about. Do something similar to Eagleville Green. So that would be new construction. Now, the reason that's so important to something, to a nonprofit or a Mansfield Housing Authority, is in order to leverage the funds from Connecticut Housing Finance Authority or Department of Housing, if they go in in hand with a couple of million dollars or whatever, to say, we already have these funds to begin this initiative, and here's our budget for what we need. They're, they're much more likely to be regarded seriously than if they're coming in with no assets at all.
Oh, right, right. I guess I'm just looking that these people would still have to make out a, uh, a full application to get a zoning permit.
Oh, sure. We don't have to, so our approval, for example, if we like their concept, might be that we approve it on the condition that they get them all of the zoning approvals, et cetera.
And, and we're more or less approving it as a proposal for them to be able to get money from the housing trust fund, right?
Right, but pending zoning.
Yes, we can obviously, and, and of course, a recommendation to the town council, not, um.
I just wanted to get that straight in my head because, uh, there's a lot of paperwork, boy.
There is, and so it might also be, and that's something we have to think about, is whether, let's just say if it was for, um, a known entity like the Mansfield Housing Authority or their, their, their spinoff, uh, nonprofit, uh, they might need some pre-development funds. Um,
Right.
And that we might grant those pre-developed, because we think the likelihood of their getting a project is very high.
Right.
Um.
So this is giving us maximum flexibility.
Yeah, I put a question after sale or sale, um, ownership, I don't know, I think we have to discuss further whether we're, um, I don't even know what that means, sale ownership. Um, yeah, I, um, oh, I see, if, for, for people to own their own, um, for the people who they would be targeting, own their own units. And I think we'd have to really talk about that, um.
Yeah.
So again, in terms of the formatting, I think this section should have questions where there's fillable forms, but then it should say, please describe the proposal project in detail in appendix three or something, and include the following, and then put bulleted items that they're gonna put in their project description, and it could pick up some of these things like, you know, right here, it says, how many housing units are being proposed? Is that a, what's expected now? Somebody just puts a number there, or do they write something? I mean, that's.
They would have had to have plans already drawn up that would say how many housing units per the property that they're going on to. Because again, zoning regulations say they can only have so many dwellings on per acre.
This should go to an appendix in these things where they're gonna have to write something out and describe something should be.
Let's not, I mean, let's just look at some of the information, because what I just, yeah, I made a note that we maybe want to use this Stanford, um, temp, application as a template. And so we could, uh, this is a lot of mine, but then I'd have to go back, and then we, we would make sure that all, there's a lot of what I've added, I took from the Stanford application. Um, so it would be take, taking a look at the Stanford application, if it is straightforward, uh, and then even adding some, adding or subtracting some things that would seem most relevant to us, but it's, it's, it is an outline form, right, the Stanford application.
Yeah.
So, did you pick up some of their categories?
I picked up some of their, um, I, I just picked up some of the information that they were trying to gather and put, try to put it where it's made sense in this. Um, uh, in this, this is a Fairfield, uh, town of Fairfield's application there.
So.
So just, I added here, by the way, um, this is under, um, the, um, project proposal, it's on the second page of that. Um, I think this is really, really important about how they will choose, you know, how are they going to recruit uh, people, the target population, how, how they'll document eligibility and what their plan is to recertify. I'm really concerned about that, and I'll talk about that again Thursday, but I'm really concerned about that in, in all of these new developments, frankly, um, and I, um, I've talked further with, um, Rebecca, um, at the record fields at the, at the Housing Authority. And potentially, there are some of their waiting lists could be used as the first choice, um, that the, any developer, anybody would have to go to, to advertise for tenants. Particularly in section eight, I think, and for Halaico Estates, where there might be people for these new private developments, who would be an income level that, um, that would be possible. Also, the cert, recertification. I really think we have to, we have to have oversight of that. I mean, it was really interesting when I talked to the Department of Housing, a specialist there about what's going on here, and he said, well, what's to prevent a developer from just renting to, um, a couple of students who show that they don't have any money.
Right.
Right.
Which, you know, I don't want students who don't have any money to be homeless, but, um, we, um, I also don't want this to be kind of a sham when they're disclosing rental income or, um, so the recertification of people's income and status each year, the Housing Authority could also do that at a fee, which the developer would have to pay, which the owner of the units would have to pay, so I, I threw that in there, because I, I thought, um, you know, if, if it's established nonprofit or the Housing Authority, they still need to talk about this, but, um, but it's a less concern.
Um, do they guarantee that for X U?
Well, they.
I mean, they might say, okay, we're gonna do this, but then.
Well, we'll see, I haven't read the plan yet, but if, we're, I guess every new, one of these new housing developments that's being proposed is going to come to us for our.
Right.
And so we're gonna do that, doing that Thursday night, I haven't read it yet, but they're supposed to be outlining in that what their plan is for doing exactly this.
Right.
I think we can throw those questions out, um. Um, and they have to do it, this is for 40 years, these are 40 year set aside.
Okay.
In all these.
So that was my question is the recertification comes under the 40 year rule.
Yes, what has to be done every year.
Right.
Every year. And it's not, you know, the Housing Authority is very skilled at that, because they have to do it for section eight, they have to do it for the own units.
Right. No, that's critical.
Right.
All right, so, um, all right, so unless you have other things you wanted to add, I thought I don't see that we need this, you know, I'll have to go back to the drawing board and, uh, use the Stanford application and plug into it information that maybe isn't covered here.
Yeah, I'm looking at what I wrote. Uh, so their definition of different categories on the project description.
Under project description.
Yeah, I don't know that we need this. It's a checklist, I mean, this is gonna come out in the project description, I assume.
Um.
I mean, I, if you want to just go through their app, application, and and identify things that we think we should include.
Well, um, I, I haven't even, no, I, I personally don't want to do that because, uh,
Uh, yeah.
That wasn't our, uh, um, you know, I wish, it really bothers me a bit, I wish that, um, we could, uh, you know, like if I'm revising, revising, it's now we're gonna use a Stanford application, we're, we're prevented from sharing information back and forth, um, if we're not in a meeting.
Right.
Right.
So.
So I guess we could.
Yeah, I mean, I think. I like this table they have for the mix of units.
That, that's cool.
What's on? Affordability levels, types of units, unit mix.
Um.
So we just say.
Oh, I see, right. No, that's really, that's really good, that, yeah.
We just say.
I put it up on the screen, okay, the.
Right.
And affordability levels, what percentage are 80%.
Briefly describe the unit mix, unit size, number of bedrooms, and proposed distribution of units by income level. So we say it in words. Right?
Right, right. Some might actually.
Let's create that table.
The market weight too, because that seems to be more and more the model, uh, both to allow a necessary income and also to prevent um, any of these developments from, from being seen as just low income housing.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do you want to look at the priorities, which, um, I can.
I, I needed one other clarification, the 40 years. Uh, the loan or deed restriction. Who's responsible for the 40 years? The developer?
Yes, the owner changes ownership, that remains as a deed restriction.
Okay.
That's how it's done, um, I think. elsewhere, and I think it's a state standard.
Okay. Cause I know most commercial loans, regular loans, residential loans are usually the highest they go is 30 years.
Yeah. That's another thing we have to decide, are we loaning or granting?
Right.
Right.
That's a little, it's getting a little complicated.
Yeah, I think the, what Jennifer and others do.
Yeah, we might have to get, um, some extra help with that.
Right, I agree. Cause I have no idea.
I don't know what happened on this priority section I noted. Something happened, and I know I did not send it with all these typos.
Nah, I did not see typos.
They're showing up online, and I don't.
It's weird.
Um.
That's the, uh, form, that's this Stanford form.
Wait, here's the priorities, yes.
Oh, that's the PDF file?
No, I, that's what happened, the PDF.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yes, it, it converted to, um, a word.
Oh, that's bad.
She sent it, I mean, I converted it, because I'm not, I don't know how to.
No, I know.
To, um, edit a PDF, can you edit a PDF?
Uh, you gotta have, like, a D B.
What? Have to have a what?
The D O B software.
Oh, I don't know that I have, yeah.
It's so expensive. Not much worth.
Okay.
So I'm doing minutes, aren't I, or?
Well, I, this is really, we can't pass anything, so. Say that we.
Edited.
We, uh, decided to use the Stanford housing as a of the house, their application as a template, it's, it will, will be redone, she will try to redo it. But I, I guess, um, it's hard to discuss the priorities when we're all not here, because.
Right.
Um. Okay. Really. Uh, I never had that happen before on a, um, when it converted to one.
Yeah, doesn't go so well in that direction.
Okay, well, I don't know, did you, Katie or Michael, did you have any burning issues with, I?
So on the list, it's housing trust priorities, and there's six listed. To me, it's like, okay, who's not in the priorities that we traditionally talk? And the only one I thought about was, you know, we talked about young couples just starting in their first house, and they're not, I don't see that listed, but otherwise, you know, this is everybody.
Well, families with children, that, that might do that.
It's number four.
Um, yeah.
So we talk about, you know, criterion is affordability, people that cannot afford a house, so economics, homeless or risk of homelessness.
Yeah.
Uh, elderly, families, disabilities, and then six you added, which I think is good. But then, you know, the only other category we talk about, I think, in the housing plan is, you know, young couples that are. young couples that are.
Individuals or couples over the age of what, 21? Who meet income requirements, was that?
Yes, I'm guessing that's not incorporated in any of these groups.
No, it isn't.
Is that? What about the student issue? So the student issue to me, I think, don't you have to, I don't fully understand it, but don't you have to split it into undergrads and grads? Aren't those two different categories?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't I don't know the answer. I mean, I don't I think you have to put an age. You have to, I don't think you can.
I'm just thinking though, in terms of qualifying, so and I know.
I don't think it'd be based upon whether you're an undergraduate or graduate. It has to be based on need and we can have an age restriction.
Because an undergrad, I mean, a graduate student, a lot of them are supported on a stipend.
I know, but a lot of, you know, the, you know, who's in, in Hohlinco Estates, it's graduate students.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They're on.
Graduate students. Qualifying because they're on these stipends, which are really small. And so and also because they're probably looking more often looking for off-campus housing, graduate students. And probably more married and have children.
Right, right.
And so you know.
We can't, we can't specify that we won't that the trust fund isn't going to fund anything that has to do with students, but we can.
Right.
We can specify a and income status. So I just added what you said, individuals.
Has to be by income.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is then is that going to open the door to a bunch of graduate students?
Well, it, it's open anyhow.
Okay.
Right.
Unless we say that we don't only want to have as a priority, families with children, that would still be open to graduate students.
Correct. Some graduates.
Yes. And we don't want to have, we don't want to be charged, but.
I guess part of this is my experience would say graduate students are less likely to stay in Mansfield.
Right.
And so we're basically providing them housing.
That's right.
Grad school here and then they're.
That's why I fumed and fussed about what does the university do?
Right.
Right. Because they were at one time going to provide a whole bunch of housing for their graduate students and that has fallen by the wayside. That was the whole thing at one time. I remember them talking about it. And it hasn't happened. And I will say that the standard that's going in down to the Holiday Mall area, that's who they were hoping to target was students, but also graduate students.
These are our priorities, so we don't have to include everybody that right?
Right.
That's why I didn't put individuals or couples over age 21 who meet income requirements.
I would then leave that out.
Leave it out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Priority, it's not a higher priority. And I don't feel like we're losing things by doing that. Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay.
No.
Just trying to correct this. Okay, was there any, anything else burning? I mean, some of these we haven't talked about.
Yeah, I didn't understand the three bullets under the next item.
The issues.
With exceptions as follows, trust fund allowed uses.
Okay.
Or units that receive trust fund grants will have deed restrictions for 40 years with exceptions as outlined.
Some of this I was taking out of the plan.
Okay.
So let's see, allowed uses.
So they're from the affordable housing plan?
I'm not sure now. Let's see, for newer revote, a mom and family having principal occupancies or less, I think, yes, I think that so I don't know why I did that because that should have a deed restriction.
So this last one says, see affordable housing plan. Individual homes.
They're just in line of support. Okay. And that, that should have.
Okay.
Oh, individual, oh, individual homes, maybe that was my purpose. That was the one that might have a
Okay.
Might have a deed restriction.
So.
I don't know whether we want to do that. I mean, that was in the plan.
Let's, let's pass that up to Jane too. I mean,
Okay.
we shouldn't spend too much on things that I think other people are going to.
We can decide patient about whether we want to include individuals' homes, individual homes. I mean, there's only so much we can do with, we're gonna, so yeah, so maybe we'll end up with a big fat, maybe we'll have $10 million in that trust fund. It just looks like it if the pace of things are going. But I don't know, there's only so much you can do with that. I think, I personally want to get the most bang for the buck and I don't know if that's on individual homes.
I agree. I agree. And this, isn't there other things in the town where an individual can go and solicit the town for help? And they do, they get a deed restriction. I know of one here in Rolling Hills that that happened to. And once they sell their mobile home, then they have to pay that loan back. And it was for refurbishing the mobile home because it was almost not livable.
Was that, that's probably that CDVG money, that community development block grant?
It could have been. I don't know the specifics. I'm getting this secondhand from somebody else.
Right.
Just told me about it.
Rebecca spoke to us and I think you know, they had put all the pieces together, all this money and they need a little bit more for it. And she said, we'd happily take it as a loan and we could have moved forward really rapidly. And it's like, it was a perfect thing to support, right?
So I, I, we, I, you know, had delayed in asking social services to come and give us a rundown of exactly how they help individuals, what their data is on people in need until there was a new person in. And maybe that's something we need to do.
Right. Because I, I think we should be worrying or prioritize more for a group of individuals as opposed to an individual. And let the town, see if the town will take care of the individuals and we'll take care of developers and that, that will take care of more people.
To the extent that, you know, they can.
Yeah.
There are people who right now, if you're at risk of, if you become homeless, your only option is to go to Willamette and hope you can get into the shelter or get into, you know, help them as a regional
Right.
CAM, the Assistance Network that will help you find a place and hopefully get you a rent supplement or something, but there's nothing, we have nothing in town. So the issues I just raised which we don't have to deal with right now. I'm just adding, Housing Authority oversee recertification.
Yeah.
And the restricted private housing. All right. I am really going to razz Paul and Gina.
Well, we got Paul.
I hope Gina's okay.
Yeah. Oh, that's right.
Okay, anything else, Katie?
Nope, I'm all set. Yeah, I really did like that prior, that page of priorities for housing trust fund and issues to resolve. I really liked that page that that was, that was very good. Really was, I like that.
I'm sort of back to what I did used to do, I did a lot of consulting. After I decided I was sick of working for other people. And so
Yeah.
I consulted for about.
Excuse me.
I don't know for I don't know how many years, 15 years, but so I did a lot of program development, you know, with people and a lot of it was around housing and around mental health issues and so I was accustomed to you know, outlining issues. Okay. All right, so not for Thursday, but when we decide we are going to meet again, I will try to have a, using the Stanford application, use that as a template and add to that.
Is there anything you'd like me to work on? I have to get ready for Thursday, I know, but I'll actually I'll be here another week. I'll be gone two weeks.
Oh, okay. Well, then don't worry about it. Where are you going?
See my son in LA.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, we haven't been to LA since before the pandemic.
No, we were supposed to go out for my stepdaughter's doctoral graduation, but she decided not to go because she's changing jobs and she's running back and forth to review it in the States.
Do that.
So, cancer. Okay, Katie, thank you. So we're done.
Very good.
It was the most efficient meeting we ever.
That's right.
Very good.
Okay, good night.
Awesome. Take care.
Bye.